...mortified when they found out. They were in the house. On that note, we're gonna start the meeting and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming out, everybody. We'll start with you, approval of the agenda. Anything to add?
On your personnel, I have a number three, Anderson Lee request, which everyone should have received. I'll crack the oops. And there'll be a few other things I talked about during the report, but I think that's about it.
Okay.
That's the big ones.
Dan?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
No.
All right. No? Okay, I've got one thing. It is a amendment to item C in the consent agenda, the resolution certifying delinquent claims. Number twelve, the KR properties needs to be changed to nine hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents instead of the thousand thirty-seven twenty-five. So nine twenty-three fifty-three for number twelve. That's all I have on for that. So entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Duane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries consent agenda. Any questions for the administrative consent agenda as we amended number C? No. Entertainer motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lonnie. Do I have a second?
I have something.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Visitors, we don't have mayor's report. I just have one thing tonight, well, a couple of things. Thanks to the fire department and everybody involved in the parade on Saturday. I've heard good things about it. I've heard a few tweaks if we ever did that again, if what we do, I think everybody involved feels the same way. But at the end of the day, in a year like we've had, the kids who wanted to stick it out and stuff there with their parents were able to go out, see Santa Claus, do Grinch, do whatever. And everybody who did participate in it, the kids had a great time and they appreciated it. So appreciate you guys doing that. It was a lot more time than you had probably planned, but there were a lot of kids out there waiting for you, so it was good. And then the second one, not such a happy moment. Just like to send a condolences out to the family of Barb Pike. She passed on Monday. She was longtime city clerk, city councilperson, and then also the mayor. And then the volunteer that volunteered for every organization in town for decades. So we're gonna miss Barb and we send our condolences to her family. And to Bob, who's at, well, over in, I'm sorry, Dutch Center, goodness, I'm there. So if you run into any other family members, share your thoughts there. So thanks to Barb for all she did. Public forum, I don't have any cards. Committee reports, planning commission, number one, resolution for single patio homes in Prairie Willow support.
Sure, as you take a look, you can see in the package there, you've got a resolution. Earlier this week on Monday, the application was made to basically revise this, you know, this PUD. In essence, what happened was, when it was originally submitted, the planning commission took a look at it as attached homes. And earlier this year, our own department and looking at the building permits, there was a submittal for a single family, sort of, you know, separated out homes. And basically, it shouldn't affect a lot of the actual implementation. You know, there are some setback changes. However, overall, we think it might actually end up being a better product, but we did request they come in and get reapproved for that because it really wasn't what they had submitted. So I don't know, Duane, if you've got anything you wanted to add or?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I mean, it's not gonna be a huge, you know, change really overall for us.
So the recommendation from the?
The recommendation was approval.
Okay. Any questions for planning commission? Dan and Mel? Entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Duane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Second resolution rescinding and reissuing of variants for the Domino's property.
Sure, and this one was a little bit more unusual. We had some debate on Monday night, the planning commission. In essence, back in two thousand sixteen, the owner of Domino's had applied for basically a building change and necessitated a sort of sound screening on the top of their building. However, they found over time that it was not a feasible change. And after the neighbor who had originally asked them to add that in had given us a letter basically saying that he did not feel it was necessary. The owner had been advised that we would redo this for him. And I think the planning commission had some good debate about it. One thing they wanted to stress is that when we look at issuing variances, it's on an individual, one-on-one basis. It's not precedent related. Each situation is unique and it needs to be viewed in that light. And so they did recommend basically amending this, but by canceling, revoking, and then issuing a new variant. That was the process they thought was most appropriate.
Okay. Any questions for the planning commission? We can do this all in one, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Or we have to do separate?
Yeah, I think you should be fine doing it all in one.
All in one, okay. All right, so entertain a motion to rescind and reissue the variants for the Domino's building.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Motion.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Number two, from the park board, resolution increasing the number of members of the park board. So that's in your packet. Are there any questions on that? Okay, I'll make the motion to approve increasing the number of park members.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Same sign, motion carries.
On that, the board last night at Park Board, they were just curious of when you would be repaying those too.
Soon as we get the people recommended by, we'll make an official task meeting. Yep.
They were just asking.
Yes, in fact, Linda, could you give me a list of all the ones that are, you know, that list for all the, so we can serve?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to old business. We're gonna go to really old business first, the fire relief bylaws amendment. I think this is all sentinel. It's all been hung up at the state level for years.
State says we're good.
So again, it's just kind of a cleanup. So entertain a motion to approve the total movement. Thanks, Duane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same side, motion carries. Gee, library report from Carl Sanderson. Everybody has that in their packet.
So, and I had sent that out to you as well, just, and Pat, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Pat's been taking a look at it and her and I met with Charlie and we're starting to develop some staff questions. We have a meeting scheduled for later this week to meet with Carl Sanderson themselves. What I wanted to do is, you know, you guys had a chance to at least read through the report itself a little bit, is I wanted to ask if you had any specific questions that you'd like us to ask. Because, you know, I go through and I have my list of questions and I wanna say, okay, how is this gonna work? How is that gonna work? And I'm sure, you know, Pat and Charlie do as well. But are there specific things that you would like to get feedback on? Or, you know, for example, would you be interested in coming and sitting down, I don't know, Mel, if you'd be interested, if you have time on Friday, that meeting, it's at ten thirty. We just, I wanna make sure the council has knowledge of this project more than what happened when it was originally constructed. Because it seemed like that was part of the, the communication gap was what led to some of the issues that we're having now.
So, I guess, a couple of things.
Sure.
Obviously, we have an issue, right? When I was on library board for those several years and just it's continuing. So we have to do something. There's, we don't have a choice with this stuff. And otherwise, it's just gonna deteriorate, fall over at some point. So how do we pay for it? You know, the funding mechanism, we have, we have to do some repairs, we have to pay for it. I know there's some stuff, but.
Yeah.
And then as far as holding the people who did this project five years ago to some type of accountability. I know there's a lot of hurdles there with location and everything else and time, but we have a report that basically says things weren't built correctly. Not even just a little bit or five, they were, you know, big mess ups. To where, do we send this report to them and say, hey, we know you're in another state and we know we'd have to come litigate there, but are you willing to stand behind your work? I mean, can you, I mean, is that a possibility?
Yeah, it's not, we just haven't gotten a response from them in the past when we've done that. But it doesn't hurt. What, the one concern that I have is that it might start the clock ticking. You know, once you do this, once you give notice, once you, you know, you have X amount of six months or a year to initiate, you know, lawsuits. So it's clear that the city has noticed that these claims, so they can argue that the statute of limitations is starting to run on it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Will it start to run from basically the date we receive the report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, once you've gotten it, you can't argue that.
Right.
So I, you know, to that point, I don't think it's gonna hurt to send it to them and say, hey, you know, we've got all of these problems. What do you plan to do? And if not, if you're not willing to assist us, you're gonna, you'll be hearing from our attorney, from another attorney perhaps, you know, attorneys. You'll be hearing from our attorneys, well.
Yeah, and that's definitely one issue. So, I mean, you identified three. I'll just address both. So one of them is obviously legal venues and, you know, I'll be advised by our city attorney and the council, of course, on the proper course of action. And whatever you decide to do, that isn't necessarily something I have a lot of expertise and I don't know the law on that. But the other two issues are a financial issue, which at this time I don't want the council to be overly, you know, concerned about, you know, because we don't know what the solution will be. We don't know what the price tag will be. Nancy and I have discussed it. I know we've talked with Pat and other staff. You know, we're gonna work to find solutions for that, that, you know, we, you know, we'll do the best we can. And I think, you know, we'll bring a solution to you or maybe a couple of options to the council in the course of time. After we've come up with what the third one is, which is, you know, what is the right course of action for the council and the library board as well considers to be the best fix for the problems. Because my goal is, you know, yes, there are things that happened before and I've told, you know, the library board, we talked with them, you know, I'm not here necessarily to castigate current staff because I think in our current staff, people who are working here, all goal is to try and fix this. It's a matter of, you know, my goal is to try and make it so that we have a facility that's usable for the public, serves the public as well as it can. And so, you know, the financial one, I would just say, you know, at this time, you know, I'm, we're gonna focus on that once we know what the cost will be. And at this time, you know, there's a range, you know, between that lower end and the higher end. And the lower end, there's one solution to that, which may not be as painful. And on the higher end, we have to make some serious choices about how we would mitigate it. Lonnie, do you have a question?
Two, two questions. First off, for you, 'cause I can't make it to this meeting. My biggest concern is if they repair it like kind, is, once they remove the dome, is the base suitable to even redo it the way it is? I mean, is it something that we need to somehow possibly rebuild the library? I mean, because that was one of the issues, the base wasn't correct to attach this dome to it.
Yeah, well, there's a substantial amount of weight in that dome structure itself. You know, I was not here when it was built, but the way they explained it to me was that they basically filled it with sand and that's how they, you know, they, they had to have to take, you know, Charlie said they took it up one, you know, bobcat at a time because that's how they got to build. So there's a lot of concrete, there's a lot of weight there.
Right.
If you read through the report, you know, they almost reverse engineered kind of. They had to go back and go, how did they actually put this together and make it work? So I mean, that's definitely a good question. And I mean, they're talking about, you know, how will we support the weight and how will that work? That's a good question.
Yes. Second question I got would be for you. Is this company, or is there any way to find out if this company is actually doing other work in the state? And the reason I ask this, do we wanna notify the secretary of state all the issues we're having with this company? Because they must have had a license to do work in the state, so the secretary could pull their license?
I, I don't believe that they are licensed anymore because that was the issue that we had with trying to get as-built from them. They said, we're not licensed there anymore. We can't even put them together for you.
But do we want to notify the secretary in case they do come back? Do we want another city having the same issue?
Perhaps. It's not a.
I mean, if I was a company doing business in several states and one state pulled my license or made it so I can't get a license, other states can be aware of that. It'll put just a little pressure on them.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting idea.
Okay, that's all I had.
The question I have, going through this, how did this pass our own inspectors? Did we not inspect this building?
From the way I understood, they were flying two things and not notifying them to get inspection stuff.
So the time you got there was too late?
Yes. That's the way I understood it.
Oh, and I will say, I mean, I don't wanna speak out of term, but I do think part of it is when the building inspection process happened, from my understanding is that it was, he inspected one item. And if that item passed, he was not inspecting the complete finished product. You know, he just got the spec sheet and says, okay, does this support pass that inspection? If it does, then check mark. You know, at the end of the day, you know, they have the architectural and stuff like that. The general is supposed to be saying, okay, how does this all come together? So, you know, that's, that's a question I've asked, is, you know, we have a building inspector we work very closely with. Where was the check on this?
I'm looking at number six of the inadequate sanitary wafer line.
Yeah, and that's a good point.
Standard, right.
I think that goes to, yeah, not to throw.
That's an agreement.
Yeah. Not to throw the inspection process under the bus completely, but really, if you've ever been, I mean, when we built our home seven years ago, I was there when the radical inspection was done. I was there when the other, it's thirty seconds. They don't look at anything. They came in, put a sticker on the box and walked out. So it's like the garage that was built up on Fist Street here a few years ago that we talked about last year or four, that was like three times the size it's supposed to be. That was inspected. I mean, we have hundreds of inspection things that get through inspection, but it just gets done and stamped and done. So I don't know how we, I've asked that before. Shouldn't the inspectors have some accountability in it too? Because they're the ones who said it was correct. So that's a bigger issue than just the library.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something we have to look at in the future.
Sure.
I mean, we're paying for the service.
I mean, I think lack of oversight was probably the number one issue.
Sure.
But is there anything, is there anything else you, council members would like added to that question list, that feels particular in your mind?
Is there any cheap, quick fixes to, just to prevent this from getting even further damaged?
Sure.
You know, and I'm thinking just throwing in some drainage tile around the base of the building, you know, and these, and filling these depressions or increasing the grade so that at least slopes away from the building.
Well, that's something we talked about at a staff level a little bit, is some of these that they've identified are things that we'd like to, we feel like could be handled by staff. You know, for example, the regrading, I mean, I think you talked about when you built your home, I mean, anybody who would say, yeah, you don't put the lowest part next to the building, that makes a lot of sense. And then you're talking about drainage. There are folks that have to go and get a drainage system installed because they've got water pressure in their basement and boulder houses. So I mean, that's, that's something someone we can take away from.
I mean, I'm sure it kinda goes without saying, but as we start to look at fixing things, we need to be documenting every single step of the way, what was before and what we did in case we do end up sending a loadout to our friends in Utah.
I guess the biggest, I mean, question, because if we're gonna, well, we need to fix it, we're gonna do this fix, right?
Yeah.
Let's make sure we do it for what the life of the building should be. I don't wanna do a, a quick thing that prevents more damage in the meantime, it's fine, but not a Band-Aid that in four years, the council's sitting here, first going, no, we do it's gonna be another million dollars or another six hundred thousand. Whatever the fix it should be.
For the life.
Twenty-five to forty-year.
Yeah, well, I mean, my goal would certainly to target the end of the bond. You know, I don't know.
Sure.
You know, that would be my goal, is, you know, the debt service, that's a substantial amount of money. We would certainly want it to make the life, you know, lifespan of that bond pay.
Right.
Because at that time, the council at that time could say, we've got this capacity if we need to do a larger scale renovation. Yeah, I mean, I, 'cause I can't guarantee that any fix we're gonna do is gonna last forty years.
No.
That building should last a long time. It's concrete, it's a dome.
But we need a permanent fix.
Yeah, we wanna make it more permanent fix. That's all we, yeah.
That would be my only comment.
Quality, no.
Pat, did you have anything you wanna know? I appreciate you coming to my.
Sure, no, I, I don't have anything more. A lot of these questions were the same ones I have. Yeah, and that it is a permanent and not a Band-Aid approach, which, you know, has been done in the forty years that we've had it. Some of that has already happened. And no one is more chagrined than I am, you know, the deterioration that we see. So we thank you for your support and, you know.
I think we thank you for dealing with it.
Yeah, thanks, Pat.
Okay, sure. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, I'll bring these questions along with the ones that the staff has in addition. And we'll have that meeting and we'll sit down and we'll see what they have to say. And we'll, you know, we'll still updating you on a regular basis as we have more information. And once we come to maybe a couple of different options we feel like might be helpful. You know, we're gonna be talking with the library board a lot too, to keep them in school, because I do think it's important. We wanna maintain a good relationship with them. And then when we have those options, obviously, in the course of time, you know, financing is gonna be through, you know, to the city. So we will bring that to the council as well. So I appreciate all the feedback on this. And if you think of something else, let me know.
Thank you. On fee schedule.
Sure, including your packet, you've got the fee schedule with, you should have received copies electronically of the original from this year and then redline copies. And then you've got the PDF now too. There were some changes, mostly, and a couple of them are proposed changes. You take a look especially at the parking rec, the parking rec committee, you know, has advised us, you know, they're looking at revising the revenue. They had another meeting last night, talked again about trying to cut costs and sort of normalize revenue to try and reduce the dependency on subsidy. So there's some changes there. Not a lot of changes under, for example, building permits. We don't see a lot of changes there. Police, very few. Admin, there's a, just a, you know, one additional one that was recommended with the new council chamber facility. There was an ad there for a little bit higher fee for that, so it's gonna be a little bit more high-end option. And I'm not sure how many people would utilize it, but we wanted to make that a possibility at least. We don't have a ton of people, I don't know, of course, this year's an exceptional year for rentals anyways, but I don't know how many you've had to be, Pat, Linda.
I usually, Bisp and Walkold had rented this room for their, like, monthly or quarterly meetings, but otherwise we didn't get, we don't get a lot of requests.
Sure. Some of the larger changes are definitely under, you know, we've got the rate structures for the utilities and those are included there. And then one thing that's in your packet, it's not underneath this page, but it'd be a little further down, would be that underneath my report is that WAC SAC comparison. And that's probably the biggest one that we wanted to just review. That and then parkland fee dedication. And I'm open to options there. Those numbers were ones that we took a look at, we thought might be, you know, we know that the WAC and SAC are low. Generally, the council's, you know, made that point that we need development, paying for development. And if you take a look at that, you can see that, you know, we're a little low on that rent. I don't know, you know, I put that two thousand number in, which is a double of the WAC SAC. After looking at it, I think it might be more prudent to move that down to fifteen hundred per, just to make it more incremental. At the same time, then we also might take a look at revising the parkland fee dedication up a little bit. And what we're doing with the parkland fee dedication is we're using the basis of the updated sale value that we receive from the county assessor's office and then also on some of these properties that are sold from some of the realtors. So I think right now what we do is a ten percent of value and an eight thousand dollars per acre of, you know, per, that's a valuation we put on it. So typically, your parkland fee would be eight hundred dollars per acre. And I think what we're looking at in the interim is moving that to ten thousand per value. And so it would end up, that would be a change to what's in here, but it would be ten percent of ten thousand, so it would be a thousand dollars.
Per acre.
Which we still feel like, generally speaking, the per acre cost is, is ten thousand acres. It's not a, not an unusual price. And then as far as I said, with the other utilities thing, you know, we can take a look at those and delve into them one more deep, if you'd like to.
Okay. I have one question or comment on the license and permit fees on page five for the alcohol beverages.
Yes.
We had talked about doing something for two thousand twenty-one for the bars that had got shut down. And would that be reflected in the fee schedule or would that just be a council action?
That would be a council action.
That when they renew it.
They would leave the fee schedule intact, but if, for example, please, or no, but if they were, if everything's closed until March, we could prorate that to, you know, three quarters of a year or something like that. That would be feasible, I think, to do.
Because I think last year, people had already paid, got shut down, and we said rather than refund them, that we would just, you know, account for it in the.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I had on that. Anybody else got questions or comments?
Well, yeah, we are looking for approval if that's, you know, like I said, I mean, the big three that I'm looking at that are gonna, you know, be larger changes would be the WAC, the SAC, and then parkland fees. And I don't know, Brandon, if you wanted to speak to that at all too.
I mean, I think we're always balancing affordable housing and the housing market seems to be kind of booming around here, but we also are battling that development pays for development. So it's a, it's a little bit of a juggling act, no doubt. If we were to do like a water and sewer study on our sewer and watering, then we could definitely justify this being hired, but I think comparing yourself to yours is also appropriate too. By understanding the city of Rochester, their total fees, when you start adding everything up, is like seventeen thousand dollars per house. Developers like to call it the privilege of developing in Rochester. You see, we're at about forty-five hundred, so those are all the kind of comparisons that I want the council to kind of think about and why staff is kind of coming up with these things. And I'm not advocating for that, by the way. I'm just, just letting you guys know the bigger picture of these things. So really, the WAC and SAC helps, but it's not generating enough revenue to build a new water tower plant in twenty-twenty-two, or I think our four million dollar wastewater treatment plant up here we got planned. So it's a proverbial drop in the bucket in those two items. So just give a little context of what we're dealing with here, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for anybody? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fee schedule.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Duane. Do all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Members' report.
Yeah, you've got my report there. A couple of items I just wanna talk about in addition to that. And then, of course, I also take questions and, well, let's see. Political signage, item that came up a couple of weeks ago. We continue to get a few comments on that. Talked to the city attorney and I think we're gonna do some revised, look at some revised language in the new year, just to match it, to align it a little bit better with the state statute. So that'll be something that'll be coming. Just be aware of that. We've got some exciting stuff going on with our automated metering infrastructure. The abbreviation's AMI, and that's something I'll be bringing more information to you guys, gentlemen and ladies. As we go forward with that, it's gonna be something that's gonna help us be much more accurate with our reading, we think. The same thing's true with coming out of planning commission. Last week, we had, or this past Monday, we had variants, that the Domino's variants sort of made us think that maybe it's a need to add to our code some specific language detailing how the revocation process would work. And we'll be working on that language as well. We had a question at the park board this week about the community foundation. So maybe that's something I can touch base with you on, Duane. It sounds like you had some involvement in the past with that.
It's dead.
It's dead, right. Well, that was, their question was, because they're finding it difficult to, different community causes that don't have the five oh one C three status. We're looking for, you know, a way to do it through an umbrella kind of organization, so I'll touch base with you on that maybe.
Sure.
The ice arena, right now, it's currently not, it's not open. However, we are looking at twenty-five percent capacity with an individual skills enrichment program, which will allow some usage. So we'd, we'd like to try and get those kids the ability to do these things, as long as they're doing them by themselves. It looks like it qualifies for what the governor's changes were today from Governor Walz. And then Nancy brought to my attention that we'd like to have a fund reconciliation. And so we'd be looking for some approval on that. Nancy, I don't know if you wanted to just talk about that briefly.
Yeah, just that we've received final dollars on the Sixteenth Street project, which has been going on for a couple of years. And we're just a little short, so instead of having a negative balance, we're just asking if we could transfer that over from the street repair account. Five eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred, yeah. Do you approve all that site?
I think, I think he just asked if we wanted approval. I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
So basically, what we'll be doing is we'll be just taking it out of the line item in the, in the regular budget to true up that account so that it's zero dollar.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'll make a motion to move the funds necessarily to up the account. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Thanks, Duane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So those are the items I wanted to run through. And then, of course, as I said, you know, if you've got any questions on the regular report, by all means.
No, thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Be back.
Personnel, the first one, accept resignation of wastewater operator to Nate Police effective twelve twenty-three of twenty. So we'd like, do you have his letter of resignation in the packet? Thank Nate for his service in the city and wishing the best in this feature in our queue. I'll make a motion to accept his resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Resignation, Muriel Bowleson from the ice arena employee, effective six one of twenty, last June. Thank her for her services in the city, Catherine. Any questions on that? I'll make a motion to accept her resignation. Second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Next one is the. Next one is the, that was added to the agenda by administrator Anderson Lee Babstus, request number three.
Sure. Everyone should have received a copy of that, that letter that Mr. Anderson was asking for 90 days leave. So basically, this is something that the personnel committee has discussed. And I think based on our discussion there, they advised me that they think it would be prudent to authorize this leave at this time. But I'd certainly leave it to them to discuss any further if they've got anything.
No, not a lot. I mean, it makes sense. It's the right thing to do, so. I'll make the motion to approve the Lee Babstus, as requested.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Not from the attorney, not from the engineer. Wow.
Merry Christmas.
That's right.
Just wait, just wait.
Well, with that, we've got the correspondence. Are there any questions in the correspondence? Your department head meetings were in there. Thanks for everybody getting together. And then just thanks everybody for challenging with another year of the book, success of the year. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment for our last meeting and we'll see you in January. Is there a public? Yeah, that was like a half hour ago. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Adjourned. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm sure Tim would be happy to answer it there.
Sure. In your next meeting, you will go in the back door. So when you come for the January 13th meeting.